Welcome, everyone, to the December 18th, 7:00 PM meeting of the Barrington Zoning Board of Adjustments. I'm calling the meeting to order. For those of you who would like to, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could I have a roll call beginning at this end of the table, please?
Mr. Smakko, present.
Flanagan, present.
Fairfield, present.
Cibidow, present.
Hartikoff, present. Thank you. I'm going to start this meeting with an apology for those of you that came out last month to attend a meeting. I had a medical -- my dog is still alive, everyone. Thank you. But I apologize. In six years of service to this town, I have never missed a meeting. Up before us first is Case 2265014 NR24, an appeal from an administrative decision requested by the applicant regarding a violation of Article 19, Commercial Keeping of Farm Animals, at 17 Coachman Drive, MAP 226, Lot 50-4, in the Neighborhood Regional Zoning District, representing the owners, is Brian Barrington of Coolidge Law Firm. There. Please proceed.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm here with Mrs. Kelly as well. So I'm going to get right to the point of the argument to set forth in our appeal. The question before the board is whether the code enforcement officer was correct in his characterization of the miniature goats as counting towards the requirements of the town and the way he did it. The first argument is distinct, and that is that it talks about a farm animal. Today, you have attached to it a certification from their physician that the miniature goats, which are more the size of a dog, are a animal, a comfort animal for the special needs. And we provided a statement from the physician, Eric Roulette, D.O., that there is a person, a relative, with autism spectrum disorder, and that the goats have been an emotional support for the patient. So if the goat is there as a pet, the goat is there as an equivalent of a dog, then it doesn't qualify as a farm animal. The second and distinct argument is that the statute does not ever mention miniature goats, let alone goats, but it has the characterizations of similar animals. Testimony that you'll have, and we have someone calling in as well, my client, who's been an expert in miniature goats, that the size, the nature of the manure, the affection, the fact they're allowed into the house, their impact upon the neighbors is all minimal, and the impact is that the equivalent of a rabbit. And I don't know if you've been to state fairs, some rabbits can get just about as big as a miniature goat. When you're talking about zoning, you're talking about impact upon the land and impact upon the people. And the impact of the miniature goat is much more similar to a rabbit than to a cow, a horse, a full-size lamb. Those are all very, very large animals that put out significant manure. So I'll turn it over to -- do you want to speak first?
Well, and in considering -- I did present, even though it's not specifically -- there aren't specificity in the Barrington zoning ordinance. Durham does have a specificity relevant to miniature goats, and it accounts 5,000 square feet for a miniature goat, and that it is best suited, because they are herd animals, to have a minimum of two. Also, the housing and the fencing and the square footage and so forth, it matches what we have on our property. And in consideration that Durham is an upscale area as well, I question the impact on land values as a result, with Durham saying that residents in their town are allowed based on those parameters. Now, I do realize it's not Barrington. But again, Barrington doesn't specify miniature goats. And it is a unique and an up-and-coming animal that people desire to keep for various reasons, because Nigerian goats, their milk is particularly beneficial, more so than a cow or anything. And for their size, they have amazing benefit.
Can you tell them specifically the size of these animals?
Well, they're about -- they come to about my knee, their shoulder. And they're about the size of, I would say, maybe small lab dog. Of course, those of you that had the benefit of touring the property did get to see the two goats. And they're very friendly and very sweet animals. So I don't know if we're going to call on --
Yeah, we'll call on your front.
Larissa. Larissa is a breeder, and she also -- I'll let her talk about her background for those who may not have had the benefit of hearing her testimony before, of the benefit of these animals. Larissa, do you have your mic on?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Larissa Mullen. I live in Milton Mills, New Hampshire, so not too far away. I am the person who bred Mrs. Kelly's two adorable Nigerian dwarf dairy goats. I have been breeding this breed for about 16 years. I have my goats in two countries, and my goats also in about 25 different states throughout the country. So I have quite a bit of experience with this particular breed. Nigerian dwarf dairy goats are a miniature dairy goat breed. They are, by no stretch of the imagination, should ever be considered large livestock. They are significantly smaller than any of the other dairy goat breeds. The females, on average, when they are about full size, are probably between 45, maybe 50 pounds for a larger animal, but they're quite kind of short and squat, so they're just about as high as somebody's knee. In comparison, the larger-sized dairy goats are about up to your waist and about 200 pounds. So these are significantly smaller animals than any type of other goat breed. So they really should not be considered a large-size livestock animal because of the small size. And then they're also, in addition to the small size, they are very easy to handle, quite a bit quieter. You know, a lot of the times, I'm a commercial dairy owner, so we have a commercial dairy, but the majority of the animals that I sell are animals like the Kellys, where they're not in a dairy production situation. They're kept as pets. I have actually many of my goats that live in your town. There really are, I would say, probably six to 10, maybe a few more. I'd have to double-check. But I have many, many of my goats that live in Barrington. This is the first time anybody's had an issue like this. And again, they are a very small animal, and certainly more along the size of like a large rabbit, duck, goose, that type of thing, as opposed to a cow or a horse or a mule. They're, again, a small, small animal. So I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody has. And if there's anything else that Mr. Barrington or Ms. Kelly would like me to cover, I'm happy to do that as well.
Yep, go ahead.
So I have a question. Do you drink the milk?
For -- because --
Parker, can you turn your mic on? Thank you.
I'm sorry. So I have a question for the homeowner. Do you drink the milk?
We would. We would. However, we have hesitated. You have to breed them for them to produce milk, and then you would -- our plan was to sell any offspring or hand them over to Larissa to manage, and then just milk them for personal use. I have used dairy goat, you know, the goat milk before, and it is, for people who have intestinal irritability, it's really a good milk to have and high in vitamins and so forth. That's kind of --
Thank you. So additional question. As you may or may not remember who was here the first time, I was not here.
Right.
So the last time that you guys came up, I abstained because I was not here. Is this a recreational animal, a pet? Or is this like you're hoping to use the milk for other people?
No, for personal use.
This is a big cat.
These --
It's a 40-pound. I have two dogs, 110-pound and a 45-pound dog. So this is a big dog, a very large cat. This is a pet.
They are pets.
For you, they're pets.
Yes. And they are -- we're very attached. Yeah, we're very attached to them.
And they have a cat litter box where they go outside, or you're constantly cleaning up the house because they're constantly using the house floor for where they go to the bathroom?
No. They are -- they do have their own habitat outside as well. They have like a fenced-in area in the back of the property. We placed the fenced-in area for them, and they have a house back there, a barn for them. We placed it back there. It was the only place we could put it because we have the leach field for the septic in between the house and the fence line. So we have them fenced for their safety and also to try and --
So where do they defecate normally?
Outside.
Okay. And that's because you let them out like I let my dogs out?
Yes.
Okay. So they're a house animal. They're domesticated. They sleep inside. When they want to go outside, they make some sort of noise or indication they want to go outside, and you let them out like I let my dogs out?
Well, like I mentioned, they generally sleep in their barn.
Okay. So you let them sleep outside?
And they're allowed to come in to spend time with us.
Okay, cool. So like I have -- okay, cool.
You have these -- there's photos.
I do. I do. I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay.
So I -- thank you very much.
Any other questions? I have a question for Larissa. Larissa, could you share with us the scientific classification of a dwarf goat? Is it more in line with a sheep or more in line with a rabbit?
So goats are -- I'm not certain if I understand your question. So goats --
The biological --
So they're --
Taxonomy of these animals. Is it more in line with a sheep or is it more in line with a rabbit?
I would say it would be in line with neither of them. Goats aren't sheep, and they certainly aren't an animal like a rabbit. You know, a lot of times goats and sheep are lumped together because they look similar and they're similar species. But I would say there's no -- with sheep, there's no kind of equivalent to a miniature, very, very small animal. So like for Nigerian dwarves, they're like a very, very miniaturized goat, like a chihuahua is a miniaturized adult.
So I just want to rephrase my question, then. Is a goat species more in line with a sheep or more in line with a rabbit?
I mean, certainly goats and sheep are similar, but I think it would depend on what you're specifically speaking about, like in terms of size, diet, that type of thing. You know, and again, like I said, goats and sheep are a lot of times classified together because they are similar species, but they are in no way the same. They both have very different dietary habits, and it's not like they're crossbreeding or anything like that. I hope that answers your question. I'm sorry, I was confused.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Oh, no problem.
Larissa, because Mr. Fairfield wasn't here in the beginning, can you maybe just kind of elaborate on the differences in the -- how Nigerians digest their food and the waste they produce versus a sheep?
Sure. Okay. So they're both ruminants. So they do digest food similarly. Of course, you know, a sheep is a larger animal, so it's going to produce quite a bit more manure. Being ruminants, they have the ability to eat things that aren't particularly digestible and turn that into energy and then also into manure. But because their digestive system is so incredibly efficient at doing that, they will eat a massive amount of forage or roughage, like hay, poison ivy, things like that, like shrubs and things that really aren't particularly digestible. And then they can digest that using their four stomachs and rumination and turn that into very small pelletized manure that is relatively, I would say relatively odorless compared to other manure from other species. And then it composts very quickly. I have a pen of 20 Nigerian dwarf dairy goats in an acre, and when you walk out there, you just see grass. It's not covered in manure because the manure dissipates into the ground so quickly, and it becomes assimilated into the soil very fast. So there's not like a strong odor associated with these animals, as if, you know, with a horse, they really can't digest that food, and something can smell very horsey. With goats, it really is significantly less of an odor than you would expect from any other type of livestock animal.
So thank you for that. So I have a follow-up question to that. So when you describe her, you have how many of these small Nubian? So would you describe the input and output as far as food and waste is concerned for one of her Nubian dwarf small? I don't want to, like, you know, screw up the words because we have lawyers here on the council, and I don't want to use the wrong term. But would you describe the input and the output based on other animals' input and output for her goats?
Sure. So they're Nigerian dwarf dairy goats. I just want to be certain we make this clear. Nubian dairy goats are about 200 pounds, so they're quite a bit larger. These are Nigerian dwarves, both from Africa, but two separate species. I would say, you know, a goat probably would eat her-sized goats, you know, and mine as well. Each goat probably eats a flake of hay, so something like, you know, very, very large amount, and throughout the day probably can turn that into maybe two cups of manure. So it really is a very, very efficient digestive system, in so much that, you know, other ruminants can eat things, like you always hear goats eating things like cardboard and paper. And that's because they really can take things that are so difficult to digest and make it digestible because they have that very efficient digestive system. So, you know, a lot into a very small amount.
So you're saying that they're going to -- each one is going to end up creating two cups of, for lack of a better word, poop? And so what other animal is going to create two cups of poop in a 24-hour period?
I mean, it -- any other -- and maybe, as somebody who has poultry, I would say poultry's probably along that line. It's a small animal, which is quite a bit more manured for the size of the animal. It's certainly, I would say, massively significantly less manure than would be produced by a cow. Cows have a different -- their digestive system is slightly different than a dairy goat in that, you know, for what they eat, they're then creating an incredible amount of manure. That's the opposite of dairy goats, which is one of the reasons why they're the most popular dairy animal in the world. They just really do not produce nearly as much manure as a cow or a horse or anything like that.
Thank you.
Because they're so small. No problem.
Any other questions? Okay. Yeah, so yes, I do as well. Is there anything else you'd like to present in reference to the administrative appeal?
Just ask that all our exhibits and pictures be part of the record.
Very good. We're going to have the zoning administrator speak. We do have representation. This is an administrative appeal, and so we typically don't open up the floor because what we're discussing is whether what had been determined and sent to you is appropriately in line with the zoning ordinance itself. Timothy Sullivan is here from Upton and Hatfield and is working for the zoning board of adjustments in this particular case. Could you share with us the leading up to providing, I think it was a September 24th letter to 17 Coachman? Can you share with us highlights of the case and then your administration of that zoning ordinance, please?
A complaint was made, and visiting the property, I did a head count. And in the simplest explanation, it exceeded the allowable use of the land for keeping of farm animals that crossed over into the commercial agricultural use. And comparing RSA 2134A, the New Hampshire RSA, they describe all aspects of husbandry in one category. So I didn't differentiate different species, genus, you know, types of animals under that. They all beef or dairy cattle, steer, oxen, goat, sheep, swine, horses, mules, other equated strains of buffalo, bison, llamas, alpacas, emus, ostriches, poultry, rabbits, yaks, and elk, all fall under the state's RSA for farm agriculture. So that's how I determined that they fell into that category.
Okay. Is there a way that the land could be configured that would allow the number of animals that are being kept on it?
Our zoning is based on square footage, so those are finite numbers and --
Okay. Is there additional configurations that might be allowed?
Adding and removing, I think I provided a calculation of if you were to remove this I think to keep the two goats under current zoning, you could have the two goats and one poultry would maximize the calculation on an 8,000-square-foot lawn.
Okay. Did the goats come before or after the chickens and geese?
After.
It came after?
They were purchased, but they were yet to be born, so technically, yes.
Okay. They came after. Could you share with us the history of the zoning ordinance for Barrington, how it came about?
It was before my time. The previous zoning administrator had done some research when we were looking to create a zoning ordinance for the farming, and this was what was voted on and adopted by the residents of the town.
And do you know what year that was?
I don't. And I don't have the background on -- I know he did some research with UNH, you know, trying to come up with reasonable numbers, and that was the information that he had available to him at the time to come up with a reasonable calculation.
Did you determine in writing this letter that the Nigerian dwarf goat was more in line with a farm animal than a domesticated animal or more in line with a domesticated animal than a farm animal?
From a zoning administrator perspective, I don't know, although it's not in my purview to make that determination, if you want my opinion. They're similar in size to a dog, and I think they produce less, you know, fecal matter than a dog would in a day. But again, not a -- I do zoning as it's written until a zoning case comes before and I'm led to administer it differently. That's how I proceed.
Okay. Are there any other questions? I'm going to recognize Alexandra Smakko.
So isn't it true that the Barrington zoning ordinances actually do provide a definition of farm animal?
Correct.
And does that definition include goats?
It does not specifically say goats. I will bring it up. I believe it says sheep and like animals and similar to the state RSA. References all husbandry.
Are you referencing the ordinance specific to commercial keeping of farm animals or the general definition section of the Barrington zoning ordinances?
You'd have to go to the definition to get the calculations.
Okay. Well, I have it here. Farm animals, cattle, calves, horses, mules, swine, sheep, goats, poultry, or other similar birds and animals. Is that the definition that you used when formulating your decision?
I didn't hear all the -- the definition I used was the keeping of domestic farm animals, chickens, ducks, rabbits, other similar animals at a rate of one per 5,000 square feet of lot area, the keeping of horses, cows, pigs, sheep, and other similar animals at a rate of one per 40,000 square feet of lot area. That is the definition of commercial use of agriculture, which is not permitted.
Understood. So it sounds -- so were you aware that in the definitional section of the zoning ordinances, it actually does also subsequently define farm animals? Okay. And when you saw the goats, you turd the property?
Yeah, I did.
And when you saw them, were they similar in size to a duck or a rabbit or similar in size to, you know, pigs and larger farm animals?
I would say it would be more similar to a goose. A large goose would be a comparable size.
Okay. That's it.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Parker.
So my note was, Jamie, that you said that it exceeded the amount of animals. And so again, my first year on the board, these are not the standard Nigerian dwarf goats. So they're not the standard goat. So do we have -- and again, I don't know, and we have an expert, we have lawyers, we have the rest of us. Do we have any kind of concept as to how normal is a Nigerian dwarf goat versus a normal goat as opposed to the New Hampshire definition of goat and other husbandry and commercial animals? Because it seems to me that that's really kind of where the rubber is meeting the road.
Sure. I have no knowledge of a comparison, not dissimilar to, there's multiple species of horses that range in variety of sizes that we don't differentiate. And I would imagine with almost any species of animal, there would be variations in size. So the zoning ordinance as it's written defines them in totality as goats.
As a goat.
And I recognize from a personal standpoint that there's certainly differences in species and sizes and shapes, but not for me to determine.
So we --
Can I ask a question for the expert on the TV? Is there -- can you describe -- do you have a concept that when the state of New Hampshire says goat, what species is that and what kind of bowel movements do they have on a regular basis, on a daily basis, more specifically?
Okay. So the goat, I think, would probably be -- it really varies in size. I do also want to mention that this breed that Ms. Kelly has, the Nigerian dwarf dairy goat, has only been around since the '90s. So perhaps all the different references and the different rules have been written prior to the breed even existing. They're kind of a new thing. So I, you know, I think a lot of times they're thrown in with goats when, you know, because everybody just knows goat. But in actuality, they're, you know, significantly smaller. So, you know, generic goat, a lot of the times, is like when you say generic horse, I mean, certainly, you know, that's like a large animal, but also to be a mini, you know, mini horse. know, mini horse. So they're like the equivalent to that.
When your mother asks you for the New Hampshire sized goat, what size goat is that? How many bowel movements? How do you equip that?
So Nigerian dwarf dairy goats are now the most popular breed in the US and New Hampshire, so I would say the average sized goat in New Hampshire is about 45 to 50 pounds. They weren't this, it wasn't that, you know, 20, 30 years ago, when perhaps those rules were written.
So 20 years ago, the rules were written, what would that have been?
It would have been 200 pounds.
And the daily output of manure?
Would be, you know, scaled up from a small animal, so, you know, probably a large, a significantly larger amount, maybe, I would say probably five times the amount of a smaller sized Nigerian dwarf dairy goat, because they're about that much bigger, they're significantly larger. Does that answer your question? I'm sorry. Wanted to be certain I'm answering it correctly.
Your estimate did, thank you very much.
So, my last question is, materials were provided to us as the administrative appeal was filed, that Nigerian goats are considered somewhat rare by the American Livestock Breeds Conservancy, and that the US Department of Agriculture has approved the Nigerian dwarf goat as livestock, as a dairy goat. Their definition is that it is a livestock animal? I'm asking you, did you provide this material?
Nope, that information is not for me. The Livestock Breeds Conservancy, they originally, in the past, I have quite a bit experienced with them because we used to raise heritage breed poultry, they keep an eye on numbers of animals. Nigerian dwarf dairy goats are no longer considered a rare breed by any stretch of the imagination. They were, you know, they, until I think maybe 20 years ago, are now recognized by the American Dairy Goat Association, and they've made a meteoric rise in popularity due to, you know, their small stature, their ease in people keeping them. So they're, you know, far and above more popular than any other of the standard breeds at this point.
But would you agree with the US Department of Agriculture that the Nigerian dwarf goat is livestock?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, they are a livestock animal because goats are a livestock animal. I don't think everybody treats them like livestock, you know, like a cow is livestock.
Understood. Thank you.
No problem.
Yeah, I'd like to ask a question of the administrator.
Please.
The ordinance, and that's what we're talking about here, right? We're appealing your administrative decision. The rest of this is a good education. The ordinance does not specify the type of goats, it simply uses the word goats, correct?
Correct.
The town ordinance simply using the word goats does not give you the authority to differentiate one goat from another, is that right?
That's my opinion.
So goats are goat, and the ordinance says goat, but you can't then say, well, maybe it's a small goat, maybe it's an okay goat. You can't go that way in making a decision.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? No, okay. Is there anything else you'd like to share with us?
Just to the last comment, there's agricultural use of goats. But this is, whenever you have an ordinance, you have general ordinances that if it's a farm, the agricultural use includes goats. But this is the specific as to domestic animals on your property, and that doesn't include goats. So I don't think the fact that you mentioned goats in your general agricultural district as a general statute is controlling. You have to make the determination of whether this miniature goat is a similar animal. That's what the statute is.
Thank you.
If the ordinance doesn't allow the zoning administrator to differentiate one goat from another goat, then he has no authority to do so, is my point.
Right. Any other questions? Any other material you'd like the board to review at this time? Do I have a motion?
Yes. I move that we affirm the decision of the code enforcement officer regarding Article 19 of the Barrington zoning ordinance. The administrative officer held that the proposed use, commercial keeping of farm animals, is not permitted under the definitions of farm animals within which he can operate. So I move that we find that the decision is consistent with Article 19 and Article 18, the definition section, of the Barrington zoning ordinance. And as the code enforcement officer testified, he does not have the authority to operate outside the confines of the zoning ordinances that we have. It is not his responsibility to change the zoning ordinances. The definition of farm animals under Article 18 is cattle, calves, horses, mules, swine, sheep, goats, poultry, or other similar birds and animals. That's what we're working with today, and that is the definition that he had to use. So as Mr. Thibodeau said, it's not his responsibility to differentiate one goat from another. So he used the ordinance definition to categorize the goats, and therefore, under the definition and the ordinances that we have, his determination that a variance was necessary is proper.
Thank you. Do we have a second for that motion?
Second.
I have a second from Ms. Flanagan. Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Semaco, aye.
Flanagan, aye.
Fairfield, aye.
Thibodeau, aye.
Hardakoff, aye. In the case of the administrative appeal, the zoning board has affirmed the decision of the zoning administrator. Thank you. Up next before us is Case 23124 NR 24 VAR, request by the applicant for a variance from Article 4, Section 4.1.1, Table 2, to allow a side setback of 19 feet and 12.3, where 30 is required for a new garage located at 98 Sargent Way, map 231 Lot 24, on a 1.91 acre in a neighborhood regional zoning district. We have the William Baker from Shaheen and Gordon representing Nicole Sherrill.
I couldn't quite understand, did he say nay or yea, Parker?
I was wondering that myself.
I couldn't quite differentiate.
I said nay.
That's what I thought, but I was wondering. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all. Good clarification. So let me apologize, because I think you were here last month when I was in crisis. Sorry about that.
We're glad to hear that the dog is okay.
She's a beautiful Berniece Mountain dog. She's beautiful. Okay, so go ahead.
Thank you. I have a couple additional exhibits that I brought today. And just, one's an image of the street view of the property, one's an image of a satellite view, and then there is also a letter that has been signed by all the abutters in support of the proposed variance. I've got copies for everybody.
Oh, the all of the abutters that were noticed?
All of the abutters who have noticed are in favor, I've got a signed letter from them.
Excellent. Sure, please feel free to submit that.
Sheriff's got the support of the entire neighborhood.
Oh, excellent.
Can we keep those for the record?
Certainly.
Well, here, I'm going to give this to you, so you're very familiar with it.
I think I've probably seven.
Okay, excellent.
You know, I've got them saved, so they're all yours.
We'll submit that. Please, if you could just read through the variance criteria, please.
Sure. Sure. Again, as you mentioned, Ms. Sherrill is proposing to build a garage, portions of which would extend it into the side setback area at 98 Sargent Way, which is located in neighborhood residential district. The property contains approximately 1.91 acres of land and is improved by a single-family house, pool, and an outbuilding or shed. We are requesting a variance from Article 4, Section 4.11, Table 2. Regarding the setback in New Hampshire, law requires that the applicant must meet a five-point test in order to be granted a variance. Number one, that five-point test is that granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. Courts have found that to be contrary to the public interest, the variance must unduly and in a marked degree conflict with the ordinance such that it violates the ordinance's basic zoning objectives. One way to ascertain whether granting the variance would violate basic zoning objectives is to examine whether it would alter the essential character of the locality. Another approach is to determine whether granting the variance would violate basic zoning objectives is to examine whether granting the variance would threaten the public health, safety, or welfare. As those photos demonstrate there, along with the exhibits we provided, there is ample foliage, you know, coverage here.
Covering, yep.
Yeah, so you can see kind of back through the driveway from the street there, the area where it would be proposed, but even that's a little blocked off. It is on a gravel area where there's currently space for parking vehicles. You cannot see the neighbor's house, you can barely see it from the road. So the plans and the proposed build is consistent with the house and design, and it wouldn't alter the character of the locality at all. And similarly, would not threaten the public health, safety, or welfare in any way. Again, if you didn't know it was there and weren't looking for it, you'd have no idea it was even there. Number two, spirit of the ordinance is observed, this is very similar to the first criteria, but in Harborside Associates v. Parage Residence Hotel, the New Hampshire Supreme Court held that to adjudge whether granting a variance is not contrary to the public interest and is consistent with the spirit of the ordinance, we must determine whether the grant, the variance would unduly and in a marked degree conflict with the ordinance such that it violates the ordinance's basic zoning objectives. The court recognized two methods for ascertaining whether it would, granting a variance would violate the ordinance's basic zoning objectives. One is whether it would alter the essential character of the neighborhood, which we just discussed, it would not at all. And the second is to examine whether granting the variance would threaten public health, safety, or welfare. Again, it would not. Among the many purposes of the Barrington zoning ordinance is the reasonable and judicious use of land to preserve and promote the quality of life to the community and to safeguard natural resources such as forests. The town has recognized in its master plan and need to maintain existing forest land as development continues. So the applicant has ample room on her 1.91 acres to build a garage that wouldn't be within the setback, but the way the lot is currently configured with the driveway, and again, with the area that's already being used for parking, this proposed location would have the, really a minimal impact. There'd be no impact on forest land, there'd be no impact on the resource. You're basically just using space that's already been used for parking and building a garage on it. Again, there's ample coverage between Ms. Sherrill and her closest neighbor, who is one of the largest supporters of this and has been working to try to get this done with her these past months. So again, as far as the spirit of the ordinance observed, the granting the variance would observe the spirit of the ordinance. The third criteria is that substantial justice is done. In addressing the substantial justice factors, the Supreme Court has stated that perhaps the only guiding rule on this factor is that any loss to the individual that is not outweighed by a gain to the general public is an injustice. Here, the applicant and her family would gain tremendously from the use of the garage, whereas there would be no benefit to the public if the application was denied. So we believe that substantial justice would be done by granting the variance in this case. Number four, the values of surrounding properties are not diminished. Supreme Court has found that the ZBA may consider noise, traffic, aesthetics, and intensity of use, and considering what effect any the variance would have on surrounding property values. Again, the addition of the garage would have zero effect on noise, traffic, and aesthetics, maybe with the exception that if there is construction, you know, there'd be a few more vehicles coming in while the construction was being done. But beyond that, again, you would be hard pressed to know that this structure even exists once it is in fact built. So there'd be no diminishing of the surrounding property values. And again, that application letter, or I'm sorry, not the application, but the letter that we passed around with neighbor's signatures, that is all the abutters who have been noticed of this proposed variance, and they have all come out in support of Ms. Sherrill and of the proposed construction. So the values of surrounding properties would not be diminished in any way. Number five, literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship. For the purpose of this subparagraph, unnecessary hardship means that the following special conditions to the property distinguish it from other properties in the area. And then owing to these special conditions, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property. And second, the proposed use is a reasonable one. The New Hampshire Supreme Court has found that to demonstrate unnecessary hardship, a variance applicant must prove, one, a zoning restriction as applied to their property interferes with their reasonable use of the property, considering the unique setting of the property and its environment, and two, that no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general purpose of the zoning ordinance and the specific restriction of the property, and three, that the variance would not injure the public or private rights of others. The subject property is unique primarily due to its proximity to the side setback to her butter at 84 Sargent Way. So again, there is ample room on this property for Ms. Sherrill to build a garage, but given the existing configuration, including that of the pool, the house, and wanting to preserve the surrounding forest land, this is really the location to build the garage. It's the only feasible location on the property unless you want to get into disturbing some of the resources that are, that the town has sought to protect in its development. The purposes of the zoning ordinance is in part to promote the health, safety, welfare, and prosperity of the community, safeguard natural resources such as ponds, lakes, rivers, streams, wetlands, forests, aquifers, and to preserve the essential character and quality of life in the community, and to foster a reasonable and judicious use of land. So again, the real, the abutting property that would be most impacted this is at 84 Sargent Way with Steve and Sheila Young, and they have come out in support of this. So they've signed on to the letter, as have all the abutting properties. So when you look at this in terms of how it's going to impact not only the environment, which would be, you know, none, there'd be no impact because you're using the existing footprint of a parking area, and then of the neighbors, that is the community who have come out in support, there is no real impact there. Looking at the tax map, which was filed as part of our application, you can see that in between the, where the house is built on 84 Sargent Way and, you know, where the property boundary is with Ms. Sherrill's property, that they are about as far away in the property as you can be. There's an area of about two acres between the house and the side property boundary there. And in between the Young's house and their property, there's a wetland. So there's really no, there wouldn't be any kind of building use for them as far as being close to Ms. Sherrill's property. So it's likely their house is going to stay right where it is, there's going to be no further development anywhere close to the boundary line. So the 18 additional feet we're asking to be close to that boundary line would really have no impact whatsoever. And again, if the variance were not granted, then Ms. Sherrill would have to really probably dig up, you know, or disturb some forest land in order to do that. So, and then finally, the proposed use is a reasonable one. And to establish whether proposed use is reasonable, a landowner need not show that the variance is necessary to enable the use and enjoyment of a property, only that the proposed use is reasonable, given the property's special conditions. And again, for all the reasons that I've just discussed, including the existing footprint of the property, the neighbors in support, the really negligible, if any, effect on the surrounding community and environment that we believe in the benefit that Ms. Sherrill and her family would enjoy should the variance be granted, we believe that the proposed use is reasonable, and we would ask that the board grant the variance application.
Good. Questions? Before I ask a couple of questions, I'm going to open this up. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak for or against this variance case? Anyone online, if you're online? No? Nobody online? Well, that's easy. So I'm going to close that portion of the meeting, and I'm going to ask a couple questions. The shed that's there now will be leaving the property. It won't be moved to another location, it will be gone. Okay. The existing gravel parking area, there's about seven feet that... The existing gravel parking area, there's about seven feet that would extend past what you're building for this garage. Is all of that gravel being removed and you're not keeping that as parking, correct? Okay. There's, looks like there's a buildout of a second floor above the garage. Anyone occupying that space?
Currently, no.
Okay.
I don't know what the board would hold.
Okay. So, I would say the expectation is that it would be a storage area, and should the variance be granted, potentially a restriction that that not be a living space. You'd have to come back before multiple boards to get that done. Okay. Any other questions?
I have a question for code enforcement. The second floor that's proposed is a couple of dormers there. Should the applicant want to turn that into an accessory dwelling unit, would she simply go to you for a building permit, or she has to come in front of the board?
If this is approved with no restrictions, it would just be a permit process and the recording with deeds for an ADU restriction.
With an ADU restriction?
Correct. Any, any ADU in town would need a deed restriction.
Would need to be permitted, but.
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to.
I would not send it back to the ZBA if it was not approved without restrictions.
His point is?
My point is. Without restrictions, I think it'd turn into a.
Correct.
Correct, correct. Okay, I just want that clear. All right.
Okay.
It would be my, my perspective that you're approving a setback relief as opposed to a use relief.
Exactly.
So, I don't know why there would be restrictions, but that's.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Would anyone like to make a motion in reference to this variance case?
You're so good at it.
So, I make a motion to approve the variance for case number 231-24-NR-24VAR. The applicant has demonstrated that special conditions exist such that literal enforcement of the ordinance will result in unnecessary hardship to the applicant as defined under applicable law because of the following. Granting the variance will not be contrary to the public interest. This is private use of private property. Granting the variance would be consistent with the spirit of the ordinance because the ordinance does not intend to prevent reasonable use of property, and it does not alter the essential character of the locality. This is a residential area. Granting the variance would do substantial justice. It would allow reasonable and judicious use of this land. Granting the variance will not result in diminution of the surrounding property values. It is still residential use of residential property in a residential area. Literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship because it would essentially, for this applicant, mean that she can only use her parking area if she doesn't develop it. So, for that reason, I move that we approve this variance.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Could I have a roll call vote, beginning with Alexandra Simak?
Simak, aye.
Lanigan, aye.
Fairfield, aye.
Thibodeau, aye.
Hardikoff, aye. There you have it.
Thank you very much.
Request by the applicant for variance from Article 4, Section 4.1.1 table to allow a side setback of four feet where 30 feet is required for a 14 by 40 shed located at 15 Fogarty Road, MAP 250, Lot 43, in the Neighborhood Regional Zoning District. Welcome.
Do you want to?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't realize he.
Other than a partner?
We're going to pause for, pause for a moment for a quick biological break. When Mr. Fairfield returns, you'll just go to the paperwork you completed that starts with variance requirements at the top, and you'll read all five of your variance criteria Okay, let's proceed with the case.
Hi, my name is Mary. I live. And do you want me to just?
Yes, we've stated your reason for filing for a variance, so if you could begin with granting the variance would not be contrary to public interest, and go down from there.
Okay, so, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't alter the character of the neighborhood or threaten the health, safety, or welfare of the public or any private property surrounding. The shed would not erode the public interest within the zoning ordinance. Two, granting the variance would be consistent with the spirit of the ordinance, as this is a well-decorated shed parcel. It is uniform to the rural, rural nature of the town and my neighborhood. It complies with the setbacks on all other three sides, so I'm asking for this variance just on the one side. It is consistent with other abutting structures of my neighbors and other structures within the spirit of the ordinance. A couple of pictures here. Three, granting the variance would do substantial justice as it would allow storage for a unique car. Provide a workshop for home projects, act as storage, and serve as the only garage that is on the property. This is the only possible area for this structure, as I have wetlands to the right side and front, and my leach field is in the back of the. So, this, this area is, is the only possible area. Four, granting the variance will not result in diminution of surrounding property values. This is a high-quality shed, upwards of 25,000 to 30,000, and this additional shed would increase the value of my home, therefore making other surrounding properties more. The shed would be parallel to my neighbor's wood line on the left side, as you're looking at. And there is a large wooded area between our two houses, so it wouldn't be that visible or easily seen by abutting neighbors. In fact, it's likely only be seen from the road and not by any other neighbors. Five, literal enforcement of the provisions, provisions of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. There is no longer a garage in my home after 2021. That garage, the garage was a one-home underneath garage, and that was transformed to a little during construction in 2021. I wanted to do a 24 by 24 garage to the right of the home in 2021, and I got the thought plan done for that. Unfortunately, the laws changed, not grandfathering my 1983 home setback of the wetland. So, instead, this, this shed is acting as that garage may have, wanting not to destroy any of that wetland area and put it in this other area. So, there's no garage on the property anymore, so I have no garage or storage, and that is. Sure. My understanding of the spirit of the ordinance is to create uniformity of the rural nature within the town. Adding the shed is within that spirit, and it is consistent with character of my neighborhood. I don't believe, the way I understand it, the purpose of the ordinance was not meant for adding a high-value parcel that, that, that would be doing good and harm. Last, proposed use is reasonable because it will provide me storage, a garage space, projects, and other small things to be put in, like a snow blower, et cetera, and it would be in good taste, consistent with other parcels in the neighborhood. It meets all other setbacks on all three sides. It is not easily seen by abutting neighbors, and it would be along the tree line so that the neighbor wouldn't, wouldn't be able to see it when the foliage is full, and it would add value to the home there or to other surrounding properties.
Is there anyone online or in person that would like to speak for or against this application?
Nobody on there.
Okay. Seeing, any questions from the board?
I do. This space in between the house and the shed, what is that space?
This space in between.
The house and your proposed shed.
That was my drawing.
That's a driveway.
That's a driveway, yes. So, it, it would be running parallel right up into that driveway.
Yep.
Giving me a little bit more than the four feet. In fact, because the property goes at a angle, and I am putting it sort of straight to the driveway, it would be four feet at the end towards the street, but by the time you get 40 feet back, it would be much more like 10 or 12 feet.
Okay.
But we asked for the four because that is the closest that it does come. But it doesn't follow four feet, the whole 40 feet down along that property line.
So, the photos you've just submitted, that's, that's the structure that's going to go up?
That is, those are stock photos. That is from the company. The gray shed is just showing the color that will match my gray siding.
Okay.
But the other shed with the tractor is the actual design. And then the inside is just sort of a picture of the inside, that it is a post and beam structure, and it would meet, you know, for snow load, 70 pounds.
Okay, so, it's a shed, you're going to store cars in there, right?
I will store an antique car, and then the, the other space, there's two car spaces because it's long, would be for parking in, as well as my snow blower, my lawnmower.
Shed. Stuff for sheds.
A garage.
Yeah, it's a shed. Okay. I have no more questions. Thank you.
Mr. Fairfield?
So, just to confirm, it's not going to become a future ADU at this point?
ADU.
It's not going to become somebody for living space at this point. If you're going to make it into living space, you're going to come back.
Yes, no living space. This is a garage. It will have a garage door.
Yep, cool.
It pulls out everything.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Is this structure actually sitting on the driveway or just adjacent to the driveway? I'm just trying to interpret the drawing.
It's adjacent to the driveway.
Okay, so, the driveway doesn't go up to four feet from the property line. This is going to be sitting, is it, what is that surface right now? Do you have to develop that area currently to make room for this?
That surface is gravel, because I did have parking there. I, I made the driveway a little wider because it was a warm, far by driveway, widened it a little bit, and then in another spot, I will have to remove some rocks, have them just move down maybe.
Could you describe to the board what sits behind this proposed shed location? Could you describe what it is that runs along the backside of that area? Is that where the, yeah, and then is it the power lines that are running directly behind your property?
Yes.
Okay, so, there would be no development at any time back there?
No, I am right adjacent to the homeowner, owns that land, and then, of course, the power lines.
Understood. Okay. Any other questions, comments, or concerns?
I understand.
Okay, yeah, I just, so, is this going?
To show you.
Can you point to the side that it's going to be on?
Yes.
The dotted line, I think.
What would be going, right? So, you see, right, by, by the time we get down here, like a four foot, then we have the fourth, very tighter here, but by the time, it's a much larger area.
Okay.
So, it's not going to slam.
Any other questions?
No.
No. Seeing as there's no more questions, would anyone like to make a motion in reference
I move that we approve the variance for case number 250-43-NR-24VAR. The applicant has demonstrated that special conditions exist such that literal enforcement of the ordinance will result in unnecessary hardship to the applicant as defined under applicable law because, as the applicant testified, there is nowhere else on the property where this can go except the area that she has described. Granting the variance will not be contrary to the public interest. Granting the variance would be consistent with the spirit of the ordinance because it is not the intent to prevent reasonable use of private property. Granting of the variance would do substantial justice as it would allow reasonable and judicious use of the land. Granting the variance will not result in diminution of the surrounding property values, as this will likely increase the value of the property. Literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship because, as the applicant testified, this is the only location where this garage shed can go, and it is a reasonable use of the land to have a garage shed. And just to put into the record, this is because there are wetlands and the septic leach field which cover the rest of the property. So, I move that we approve this variance.
Fairfield, second.
Oh, I already seconded it, Mr. Fairfield. So, no, I seconded it. Could I have a roll call vote, please, beginning with Alexandra Simak?
Simak, aye.
Lanigan, aye.
Fairfield, aye.
Thibodeau, aye.
And Hardikoff, aye. Okay, happy building. Okay, happy building.
Mayor, make sure the floors are really thick.
And pressure treated, yeah. So next up before the zoning board of adjustments is case 257-29-1-gr-24, special exception request by this applicant for a special exception from Article 4, Section 4.1.2 to allow shared access points and shared driveways to reduce the impact on the parcel of land and reduce curb cuts on Mary Hill Road. Map 257, Lot 29-1 in the general residential zoning district. Presented by the applicant will be Chris Berry of Berry Engineering. Sorry for making you wait this long.
Oh, no, not a problem.
Busy evening.
We'll all have to wait our turn. Hang on just one second. So, Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Christopher Berry. I'm with Berry Surveying and Engineering, representing Mr. Felzone here this evening in his LLC, 12-month LLC. And the parcel is located along Mary Hill Road. We have had a design review hearing with the planning board on this particular parcel where we endeavor to subdivide essentially four frontage lots from a piece of property that's got ample frontage. Three of those lots would be sort of four main lots, and the fourth is a proposed backlot. And to reduce the number of curb cuts on site and to gain access to the sort of rear of the property, which is these areas here, this area here, we're proposing one single access point that would provide access to that through the use of a private road, which is permitted under the subdivision regulations for up to four lots, essentially. So a driveway can be used to access three lots that has a driveway standard. Then there's a private road standard for this particular type of four-lot subdivision. And then after that, you get into roadway standards that are required for frontage, and then you can use those roadways for frontage. So this meets the definition of the private road standard. The reason we're here tonight is the zoning ordinance does not permit people to have access to lots that are not across their frontage without permission by the ZBA. So if the ZBA were to, for some reason, not grant our request for special exception, then we would either have multiple driveway cuts, or we would be forced to essentially develop a road and develop the property more intensely because then we would meet a different roadway standard. So I think, as the board knows, the tests for special exception are different than a variance. They essentially require the board to consider whether or not there's going to be a large impact based on this project to health, self, health, wealth, safety, and welfare of others. And it does so through a series of questions. So the first test is there's no detriment to the property values in the vicinity of the proposed development. It will not result on the account of the proposed design. The location, scale, buildings, structures, parking areas, and other accessways through the emission of odors, smoke, gas, dust, noise, glare, heat, vibration, or other pollutants, or unsightly outdoor storage equipment vehicles, or other materials. And so we would just simply point out that this is a glorified driveway. Every single-family home in the town of Barrington has a single-family driveway that provides access to it. This is really no different than that and does not provide any of the nuisances that are described as part of the special exception criteria number one. No hazard will be caused to the public or adjacent property on account of a potential fire, explosion, or release of toxic materials. Again, this is a proposed driveway for access to four single-family homes, so there's no increase in any of the likelihoods of fire, explosion, things of that nature through the use of just one driveway versus multiple driveways over their frontages. There's no creation of traffic safety hazard or substantial traffic congestion that will result in the vicinity for the proposed development. I would point out that with one access point, I think we're all striving for access management on our roadways at this point for public safety reasons. And so one access point is better than two or four access points on Mary Hill Road. There's no excessive demand on municipal services. There's no additional demand on municipal services through this design versus multiple driveway cuts on Mary Hill Road. It does not change. In fact, this would hold the applicant to a higher design and construction standard than would ordinarily be required, and thus inherently provides a better level of safety when trying to access the rear of each of these properties. Driveway is proposed to be, or private road is proposed to be, 20 feet wide. It will have wide shoulders, stormwater systems, a proper turnaround for fire apparatus and other life safety vehicles. The proposed use will not result in degradation of the existing surface or groundwater quality standards, nor will it have adverse effects on the natural functions of the wetlands on the site and would result in a loss of significant habitat or flood control protection. The other thing that this design allows us to do is, instead of having four driveways and four development areas, either in close proximity or further from Mary Hill Road, where all of that runoff is essentially channelized directly to the wetlands without any form of mitigation, it allows us to have one access point, so there's a reduction in disturbance, a reduction in impervious surface. And it allows us to install one best management practice at the bottom of this slope to capture the flow, treat it prior to discharge, attenuate it prior to discharge, and then discharge it to the wetlands. So this design speaks specifically to criteria number five, where the design is to intentionally capture the flow from one driveway and treat all of this flow. And as of this afternoon, we submitted a full application to the Barrington Planning Board where they would review stormwater calculations, treatment criteria, and other design standards. Be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone on the board have questions?
Mr. Berry. The access point, whether for road frontage or, you can't see what the hell I'm looking at here, the access point for this backlot on Sheetu is this area, or the road frontage? The road frontage that you're using to create that lot is this? Okay, and before you go away. Retention pond, and this has nothing to do with your variance. I'm asking you a question. Special exception. This line is what? That's just a soil change. Can I have it in here? Can you do me here? All right, one more question. Got one more question for you. You've mentioned that you have one retention pond. That's all you need.
Actually, finally, mine had two. So there's one at the entrance, and there's one...
As long as you have more than one, or you have to equalize the flows.
Ms. Flanagan, I think you want to be recognized.
Yeah, my question kind of follows up on that. Just in your notes, you said that the eventual, that those, the wetland system or the garden, the rain garden will be managed by the eventual association. I'm just rather curious how that's going to be maintained very frequently when there's only a couple of houses to have an active association with a budget to have to meet those requirements, to have that evaluated. It doesn't always take place. How are you planning to make sure that this is being maintained properly?
So, interesting you should bring that up because we did a project very, very similar to this on Route 9, and we received a condition of approval from the planning board that said that we had to create an HOA. And our project attorney, after approval, pointed out that you actually can't create an HOA with that few number of units. And so we have a stormwater management plan and operations manual that is essentially impregnated into a shared driveway agreement that has budgetary constraints and considerations for both the maintenance of the driveway, the utilities in the driveway, and the stormwater systems in the driveway. So it's not an HOA in the form of an organized group, but the maintenance of the driveway and the stormwater systems are integral parts of each other. And it'd be tantamount to one owner saying, "Well, I don't want to plow my driveway." That can't happen because it's a group effort.
Is that, yeah, is that being built into the deeds?
Yes.
Okay, so it's deeded that way.
That's right.
Does this design reduce the amount of impermeable surface?
Yes.
Any other questions? I do need to open this up to see, did I ask? I don't think I did yet. Is there anyone speaking for or against this? Okay. Yeah. Yeah, I'd love to have you come up, give us your name, your address, and any comments you have. It can be for, against, or neutral, if you would.
My name's Christine Trompacc. I'm at 101 Mary Hill Road, and we have bought the property.
Sure, okay.
And I went to the board meeting, the planning board, and just mentioned that there's two areas from this property where it runs underneath the road onto our property, the drainage.
Ah, okay.
So that's just what I was concerned about. I mean, one driveway, we're all for.
As opposed to four?
As opposed to four, but just to make sure that the drainage is going to be taken care of, so it's not all going to flood on our side.
Excellent, okay.
So that's all.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
And you said there's no one online?
I just want to clarify, so you're saying that you prefer this solution with just the one driveway?
Okay. Okay. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Would anyone like to make a motion in reference to the special exception? If not, I will. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve a special exception for case... Hang on, I've got this somewhere. Okay, great. 257-29-1-gr-24, special exception because the applicant has demonstrated that there is no detriment to property values in the vicinity of this proposed development that would result on account of any location or scale of building, structures, parking areas, or other accessways, and that emissions, odors, smoke, gas dust, noise, glare, heat, vibration, or other pollutants, or unsightly outdoor storage vehicles, or other materials will not be present because of this. That no hazard would be caused to the public or adjacent property on account of potential fire, explosion, or release of toxic materials. That no creation of traffic safety hazard or substantial traffic congestion would result in the vicinity of this proposed development. In fact, the opposite may be true. That no excessive demand on municipal services and facilities, including but not limited to waste disposal, police, fire protection, and schools would occur. That the proposed use would not result in the degradation of existing service and groundwater quality standards, nor would it have adverse effects on the natural functions of the wetlands on the site. And it would not result in the loss of significant habitat, would not reduce flood control protection in this area, and in fact, is being designed to offset that. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Could I have a roll call vote, beginning with Mrs. Samaco?
Samaco, aye.
Flanagan, aye.
Fairfield, aye.
Thibodeau, aye.
And Hardikoff, aye. Thank you all.
Enjoy the rest of your night.
Next up before the board. Oh, yes. Would be the acceptance of meeting minutes from the September 18th zoning board of adjustment meeting, of which there were three members present. I would then expect that three members would vote for or against acceptance of the meeting minutes, and that the other two would abstain. So I would make a motion to accept meeting minutes for the zoning board of adjustment meeting from September 18th.
Flanagan, aye.
I need a second.
Oh, second.
And roll call vote, please.
Flanagan, aye.
Yes.
Thibodeau, aye.
And Hardikoff, aye.
Samaco abstained.
Fairfield abstained.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was a suggestion, by the way. I can never tell you to abstain. Last thing would be any new business? And...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just have a couple of quick things for the board. Sorry to overload you with a bunch of paperwork. As you saw when you walk in, the planning, I think the biggest thing to note is that the planning board is going to be discussing the zoning amendments proposed by the zoning board. We also have four petition zoning amendments that'll be heard at a public hearing on January 7th. And what you have is a draft. It's pretty much 90% done, meaning there's just a few, I need to relook it again for just more grammatical things. And those, sorry, let's finish with the zoning amendments. So if you have any comments, I encourage you to come, or you can email me any questions you may have or concerns, so I can share that with the board. Second thing, the rules of procedure, that was the ones that were adopted at our September meeting. I do need to make corrections. Last time, I also need to do this for the planning board, too, if for some reason there's not quorum, or if there's a weather issue or something like that. That way people know what to expect, that it'll just be helpful in the next meeting. I think that's all. I've given the next meeting dates. As you know, they're all third Wednesdays, and I think that's all, unless anybody has any questions.
So you're saying January 7th, we should come, or there's...
I would encourage you to come if you would like. It's totally up to you. It says at the planning board meeting. It's going to be advertised in the paper. I believe the 23rd or so. So the zoning amendments are handled through the planning board. The planning board has proposed 11 amendments. I'm sorry?
What time?
It starts at 6:30. However, we're hearing cases beforehand, and then we'll be working on the zoning amendments. So...
Six, 5:30, five?
It starts at 6:30.
But you said they're hearing it before 6:30?
No, it's, we're going to be hearing it during the regularly scheduled planning board meeting. Where the zoning, which starts at 6:30, the zoning amendments will be after the case files.
Next time I have any concerns about whether I can make it or not, that's the 953-8459 number.
Yes, that is my business cell. If you need to text me or get ahold of me during business hours, otherwise email. Works.
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay.
I don't have that number. Would you say that number again?
Can I give it to you later because I don't know it by heart? I'm sorry. Okay.
Should we be broadcasting this?
Oh, yeah, look, can we not? Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. So under new business, on our current ZBA website page is two outdated rules of procedure at this point. So we are now, because the last rules of procedures were adopted September 18th, we've passed the 60-day mark that we needed to wait. So the newest ones that were adopted September 18th should be on our website page. The other two should be removed. And I would say, based on rules of procedure, that at the time that we're updating how a meeting could possibly be canceled, should an emergency occur and a quorum not be present, which would carry cases automatically to the next meeting, that we should also incorporate how soon after approval of rules and procedure we would update the website so that we know that that is part of the steps that would be taken to keep the public in the know. Anybody else have questions, comments on that? Does that sound okay? Okay. So we'll be reviewing rules of procedure again, and there's nothing wrong with that. We evolve, and we use it as a live working document, and we, I think, live and learn and do better with it. So...
I have a question for Vanessa.
Yes, go ahead.
Vanessa, on this meeting you just invited us to for the planning board, those are going to be the warrant articles that are going to be discussed, right?
Correct.
All right, so these warrant articles have already been, they already have...
Fleshed out.
We've done a busy, like, very, a lot of meetings. So this, the public hearing is the actual, like, formal vote for the planning board for the warrant.
Okay, so that's the time to present a yea or nay of how you feel about the...
Okay, so that's the time to present a year or a year, how you feel about the warrant article.
Correct.
To the planning board, but it's going to be a warrant article on the, on the, in the March vote already?
Correct.
Okay, so this is, so the planning board, I support or they don't support?
Correct.
Conversation.
Well, and to be frank, since we've worked on these a lot, some of them have been flushed out. The board supports all of these. I don't know if it's all of them, but it's been the majority or consensus of the board members to move them forward to the public hearing process.
Okay.
But I mean, public comment could, I don't know.
Doubt it, but anyway.
But, yeah. And also at those, the, there's four petitioned zoning articles. Those could not be changed even if the board doesn't support them. It's citizen petitions. They had twenty five verified.
We have a copy. You gave us a copy.
I did give you a copy and that will be posted online.
Thank you.
By tomorrow, so.
Are any of the petitioned ones in conflict with the ones that the planning board has worked towards?
They are not in conflict with the planning board warrant articles. However, there may be conflict with state law on some of them.
Interesting, okay. Very good. Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn? Wow, thank you. Could I have a second, please? And Mr. Fairfield seconded. It is eight thirty one and I'll take a roll call vote for adjourning.
Samaco, aye.
Flanagan, aye.
Fairfield, aye.
Thibodeau, aye.
And Hardikoff, aye. Merry Christmas, everyone, and if you happen to celebrate Hanukkah, I hear it starts on the same same day as Christmas this year, so.